Welcome to audio file one. So I'm going to skip the basics of the background for the test. The amount of questions, um, how to be qualified. All that information should be found online very easily. So I'm just gonna get right into the actual reading of material from APIC texts and study materials. So to begin, I'm going to discuss the levels of disease prevention. The concept of the primary, the secondary, and the tertiary levels of prevention offers a framework for trying to specify the actions and the orders and the way that they should follow in dealing with an illness. So for the problem of childhood disabilities as an example, the primary prevention encompasses a reduction in risk factors like low birth weight, malnutrition, and family awareness pre-birth so that a child development can be favorably influenced later on. The primary and secondary prevention levels occur in this three level model of disease prevention during a thing that we call pre-pathogenesis. The primary phase is comprising of a set of interventions to eliminate or reduce susceptibility that frequently require a patient to undergo a behavioral change. Primary prevention of coronary heart disease, for example, includes the education on risks of smoking and encouragement of smoking cessation and more direct protection measures that might include lowering cholesterol through diet and medication as well as treating hypertension. And three levels of disease prevention may be considered in the natural history of disease of primary, secondary, and tertiary. The primary prevention, like the secondary prevention, takes place during the pathogenesis phase, not the pre-pathogenesis phase. So for primary and secondary, you're in pathogenesis phase and applying preventative measures to stem the apparent advance towards the illness before it has officially been diagnosed in the patient. So for example, uh, these measures might include early detection of a disease, prompt treatment, uh, quick cure if it was possible, slowing down of a disease's progression, complication, prevention, um, like a secondary or disability limitation or prevention if no cure is gonna be possible for the patient. In many cases, such as coronary heart disease, secondary prevention is with the addition of some measures, essentially a continuation of primary prevention with such behavior components as diet, exercise, and smoking cessation being more forcefully applied. In public health outbreaks, screening is a relatively common method of secondary prevention with case investigations and selective examinations being specific interventions at this level. The tertiary prevention level of disease prevention begins in the pathogenesis period and carries on through the clinical diagnosis of disease. The difference between the three prevention levels can be seen in the treatment of rickets, for example. The primary prevention starts with informing a public about the need for vitamin D supplementation for some of the infants. For infants who do not receive the needed supplementation, secondary and tertiary prevention is crucial. The secondary prevention includes things like detecting and treating the subclinical rickets before it progresses to clinical rickets. And tertiary prevention involves treating children with clinical rickets to prevent such complications as hypocalcemia and seizures. With the tertiary level, you have to remember that the disease has already occurred and the efforts are designed to prevent it from getting into something that's worse or to try to limit the complications such as disabilities that a patient is probably going to face because they already have the disease. Next, we're going to move on to colonization. Now, you've probably heard of colonization in the past when someone has something, but they're not necessarily, um, you know, sick or, um, causing some sort of a health issue for them. Um, so let's get into colonization. It's going to occur when a pathogenic microorganism invades the tissues or a surface that, uh, is of a different species from itself, but causes either no reaction or only a slight reaction in the host. The colonization is the first step in the infective process and usually begins with tissue in contact with the external environment and is often associated with the normal flora found on the skin. In colonization, replication does not usually occur or it does not occur enough to cause an infection. Colonization is present in almost all multicellular organisms. Colonization may be temporary or long term and may result in the host becoming a carrier and shedding the microorganism, thus infecting others such as with, uh, MRSA. A colonization frequently occurs in portals of entry such as the respiratory tract and the, uh, genitourinary tract or the GI tract. Other common sites for colonization include the nares, the XLA, the, um, let's see, open wounds, um, other areas where you might have something kinda get in there and stick around. Now, if you've worked in a hospital, you know that vascular catheters factor into the majority of nosocomial or healthcare-associated cases of septicemia related to things like staph, uh, epidermitis, uh, staph aureus and candida and septicemia being one of the most frequent life-threatening complications of vascular catheters. Such infections, as those may be the result of colonization, the multiplication of a microorganism at a specific site. In this case, an indwelling vascular catheter on the endoluminal surface of, or the, uh, external surface of the catheter under the skin. But colonization, rather than leading directly to an infection, could just as well be a means for transmitting the infection. So the catheter colonization should be confirmed by a semi-quantitative culture of the catheter segments growing at least fifteen colony-forming units by a quantitative culture of at least one hundred colony-forming units. In short, if you suspect that someone has gotten a septic infection related to a catheter, you should culture the tip of the catheter. This is common practice whenever you're in a hospital setting and should never be forgotten. There are several ways that microbes can reach and colonize the upper respiratory tract including gastro-pulmonary, the rectal pulmonary, and, uh, exogenous. Now, these are just some, but to kind of take one out and, uh, you know, kind of pick it apart, if you were to take the gastro-pulmonary, you'd be looking at endogenous pathogens that travel through the stomach to colonize the oropharynx and trachea. And, you know, studies have indicated that the pathogens actually originated in the upper respiratory track itself, but the point here is that there are different modes of colonization kind of, um, influencing infection from different routes. So it's something to keep in mind is that there's different pathways for the colonization to lead to an infection. Now let's talk about catheters and communicable diseases among newborns and infants. The infiltration by microorganisms in young children at catheter sites is frequent because of their veins being so small and fragile and they may require multiple IV sticks. This can increase the incidence of healthcare-associated infections, especially when IV use is heavy. The most common avenue of infection is migration of floral organisms at the insertion site into a cutaneous catheter tract, thereby leading to colonization of the catheter tip. Frequent hand washing, good hand hygiene, and being careful to pay attention to the policies and procedures are very important, uh, when starting IVs and at keeping infection rates low. While practicing good skin antisepsis, alcohol should not be used for initial skin prep or when removing other compounds such as chlorhexidine or iodine-based solutions from the skin. The reason for that is because the alcohol dries out the skin and is highly absorbed. The skin is best to be rinsed with sterile water. Now, in practice, in the hospital setting, that's just not gonna happen. If you have ever taken off a, uh, adhesive off someone's skin, it's going to cause so much tissue damage to use, say, sterile water to try to remove a bandage or to, um, just sit there and, 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 you know, baby it for so long that that's just not going to, it's just not gonna happen. Somebody just pouring water over to, uh, to, uh, remove iodine or, or something like that. You're going to use something more than that. So just keep that in mind. Now, when you secure IVs and catheters with tape or steris- sterile strips, um, allowing them for continuous visual inspection, uh, would be good. And the catheter site and requiring, uh, oh, I'm sorry, and also to visualize the catheter site, which would require fewer changes of, uh, the gauze and tape dressing, uh, while being able to reliably secure the catheter so there's no risk of dislodging. During early pathogenesis, the agent becomes established and physiological changes will begin. The time between the exposure to an agent and the first appearance of clinical symptoms is the incubation period when, although there are no symptoms, the organism may be causing substantial damage. There may be a period when non-specific signs and symptoms appear such as headache, fever, and lethargy. This is known as the prodromal period. Illness, disability, defects, chronic state, and complete recovery, residual defects or disability, or death, these all might follow the prodromal period. If the infection abates, then a period of resolution will occur where the severity of the symptoms gradually decreases. Now, in pre-pathogenesis, which means before the disease is generated, it's the period that leads right up to when a disease would infect the host. And, you know, this is a period of health. So pre-pathogenesis is a healthy period before the disease. During the pre-pathogenesis, there is usually equilibrium between the host, the agent, and the environment, which ends up being broken when the agent invades the host. You have, um, four things pointed out here. Uh, susceptibility is important to remember. And that's during this first stage of pre-pathogenesis, the disease has not yet developed, but the factors are favorable, um, to allow an uninterrupted march towards a full disease. You have the period of adaptation where the host has either a successful for the host or unsuccessful for the pathogen, uh, response. Um, so if successful, uh, no disease would occur and basically that infection would stop. Um, the next section is incubation where if the disease should occur, there will be a period in which the organism multiplies um, to a point where it would start creating a reaction in the host. And then you would eventually have the clinical symptoms. So the last stage of pre-pathogenesis is where the incubation ends um, either with, uh, uh, death of the pathogen because if, you know, the immune system fought it off, then it would no longer be around or the disease being, uh, detected either clinically or through experience. So once we've gone past pre-pathogenesis, we move into pathogenesis. And that is the actual cellular responses and other pathological events involved in the infectious process. A pathogen organism, uh, must find a way to be transmitted from a reservoir to gain access to the host. Once the entry is achieved after transmission, in order to grow and to replicate, the microorganism must attach through a mechanism called adherence so that it can become established within the host. Some will then use adhesions to attach to a cell, uh, for the purpose of entering inside the cell. This can cause an infection in just one type of cell or in some cases, a generalized infection. Microorganisms can cause localized infections, but some emit toxins that can cause disseminated or distant infections or cell damage. Microorganisms produce a variety of chemicals, including toxins, to help them gain control. The invading microorganism must invade the immune system which mounts a defense to protect the body. Once entrenched, the microorganism then transmits to a new host. And that's how things spread. The next section is the biofilm. So biofilm is actually a community of a variety of bacteria and other pathogens that have banded together to form a structure um, that's held together by a polysaccharide glue. Um, biofilm protects the bacteria. It provides increased resistance to antibiotics as well. Um, additionally, the lack of available nutrients in the biofilm forces the microorganisms to grow more slowly, making them less sensitive to antibiotics that would target those particular cells. The stress involved in living in the biofilm causes the bacteria to release certain acids and proteins that would also counteract antibiotics or confuse a host's immune system. The biofilms have free-roaming bacteria that emerge and circulate. These are susceptible to antibiotics, but once the drugs stop, new free-roaming bacteria emerge and infection would then flare up again. Once a biofilm is established in your body, it's very difficult to treat it. Many chronic infections are related to biofilms, especially if you think about something like gum disease. Uh, you can also have urinary or bone infections. You could have, um, uh, biofilm on medical devices that are implanted. Uh, you could have them on, um, central lines or prosthetics. So all of these things are, are sites for biofilms. The next section is immune host defenses. Immune host defenses are more specific than innate ones and are directed against a specific pathogen or its byproducts. This defense system develops resistance and immunity. So here we have antibody-mediated or humoral immunity which would begin with a microorganism that invades a host and it was going to carry with it an antigenic substance which could be, say, a part of its, uh, of a cell wall or a structure of it, or it could be a toxin or an enzyme. When a macrophage encounters a pathogen, it would phagocyte it or, um, kind of eat it or destroy it. Then the macrophage displays the broken-up fragments of the antigen on the surface to activate the T cells, which in turn activate B cells. The B cells would divide and form plasma cells which release antibodies that are specific to those antigens. The antibodies are immunoglobulins, of which there are five types. The macrophage also forms memory cells, which become part of the permanent immune system. The antibodies bind to the antigens, creating what is referred to as the antigen-antibody complex and destroying the antigen. It leads to the destruction of the pathogen. Innate host defenses. So innate host defenses are going to be your common, uh, natural defenses that will be in a healthy organism. So, uh, these are gonna be things that you're born with as long as you're a healthy person. Some of them would be resistance. So species that, uh, species resistance include a lack of receptors for adhesions, um, an inhospitable temperature or an environment, um, lack of necessary nutrients, lack of target cells for the toxins. Um, individual resistance may be a factor though, depending on if you're too young or too old, depending on your gender, depending on your overall health, uh, medications that you're on or other things. So resistance would be, say, you have a, uh, bacteria in your system. You get, uh, fever and your temperature gets too high for that to survive and it's then, uh, killed off because of that temperature. Uh, the next one would be anatomical barriers. So bacteria are not able to invade intact skin and the mucus and/or the cilia and the mucous membranes uh, make adherence difficult for many bacteria. So, um, acids also in the GI tract kill off pathogens. Um, natural acidity in the urine is not compatible with life for a lot of bacteria. So all of these things are considered anatomical barriers. We also have normal flora, the normal flora that you have in and out of your body. Um, you know, that's non-pathogenic. It's going to be competing for space um, and also inhibiting the growth of pathogenic bacteria. Um, and it will sometimes also destroy the, uh, invading bacteria. There's also antimicrobial agents, uh, body fluids. So body fluids, uh, lymphocytes, macrophages, um, these things contain proteins and protein compounds that would disrupt, inhibit, or kill invading pathogens. Uh, there's also inflammatory response. So you can get, uh, erythema, increased temperature, uh, edema. You know, these things can aid in the immune system response. And also you have, uh, phagocytes. So those are the cells that once again are gonna kind of engulf and eat or destroy the pathogens. Um, and they're called to the site by inflammation. All right, then we have the next section, which is gonna be covering cell-mediated immunity. So cell-mediated immunity is a delayed type of a hypersensitivity response. So this is gonna activate when cells, rather than antibodies, will go to fight a pathogen. So instead of the antibodies, there's actually cells that are going to fight the pathogen. That's why it's called cell-mediated immunity. So the same system is activated against, uh, transplants, um, causing rejection. Uh, after macrophages phagocyte antigens, proteins are encoded by, uh, major histocompatibility complexes so that they can display those antigenic fragments, alerting T lymphocyte cells, uh, which are coated with clusters of differentiation, uh, chemical molecules. The thymus releases cytotoxic T killer cells, uh, it's like the CD eights that can recognize the, um, MHCs or the major histocompatibility complexes, uh, carrying those foreign antigens from bacteria viruses, tumors, or transplant tissue. In an activation phase, the T cells with the correct receptors for the pathogen divide and multiply. In the effector phase, these cytotoxic T cells release the lymphotoxins that destroy the pathogenic cells. The T helper cells, uh, CD fours, secrete the lymphokines that stimulate both T cells and B cells to multiply. And then the suppressor T cells deactivate the immune response. So cell-mediated immunity is especially effective for viral fungal and protozoan infections as well as tumor cells and intracellular bacteria. The next section is normal flora. So normal flora, as you're probably already aware, um, would gain access to the surface of the body by contact with the skin or mucus membranes um, of the gastrointestinal, reproductive, or respiratory tracts. The normal flora are not usually found in internal organs such as the brain or the blood. Now, there are over two hundred organisms that are part of the normal flora, mostly bacteria, which vary according to genetics, age, gender, nutrition, environment, and other factors. Many bacteria such as staph aureus are basically pathogenic and can cause opportunistic infections. The largest numbers of flora inhabit the GI tract. The intestinal bacteria such as E. coli have an active role in digestion and prevent colonization of other pathogens, but they can also cause infection themselves. Some flora are transient while others are permanent. Flora often has tissue tropism, which is a preference for some types of a tissue. Some have surface components that allow them to bind with host cells in order to colonize. And others build bacterial biofilms. and others build bacterial biofilms, slimy glue composed primarily of capsules or use those built by other bacteria.